...to be in order for everyone to rise to say the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. March.
Here.
Mr. Hand.
Here.
Mr. Bowden.
Here.
Mr. Hand. Approval or corrections to the minutes of the July 10, 2017 Regular Village Board Meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as written? If not, a motion to accept is written.
Motion.
Second. Motion by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee March.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Hand.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Accounts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending 7/15/2017 in the amount of $49,675.04. Accounts payable, general funds $63,956.40, water and sewer fund $57,394.12, giving a total of all funds $121,352.52. Are there any questions on any of the bills or the payroll? Not a motion to pay the bills and the payroll.
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Hand.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Hand.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Public comment and/or questions on any non-agenda item? We'll move on to reports of committees. There's no police chief's report this evening. Engineers report.
Just letting you know the sidewalk program should be starting early next week. They're planning on July 31st, Mother permitting. The patching job should be starting similar time. We had a hiccup with insurance, liability insurance, so it should be starting soon. I just don't have an exact date. And then as far as the Route 50 traffic signal project, that bid opening, it's an IDOT bid opening, it is on August 4th, so by the next board meeting we'll have bid results.
Good.
A question on the sidewalk. I know you were a little over, did you know where he cut?
Where he cut.
Yeah, where he cut, yeah.
There was Menandra, Menandra-Sibley Street, upon Corning Street, the Village Hall corner here, and by the Presbyterian Church, and the first slash Crawford intersection. So you could see the map if you wanted.
Okay.
Where I showed where it was.
Okay. There's a couple places that are notoriously dangerous. I mean, not like stubby a toe, like, walk down. And one is over on the corner of Conrad and North.
Okay.
And there's another one on Sumner, about halfway down the block, on the west side. I was talking to one of the fellows at Public Works, and he said what they were thinking about doing temporarily was ripping that out and then putting asphalt in there, just kind of, so it'd be safe. I think we need to pursue that in, I don't know about the location, but I'm not exaggerating. You're talking this much out of whack, and if you hit that at night, I'm amazed we haven't had some real issues.
Do you think it's a drop off from the sidewalk, or?
Well, like, or a chunk of sidewalk is this much higher than...
It's heaved up.
Yeah. And that just, I mean, it's a pass. But it'd be easy to tear out and put in some blacktop, and at least they can people could walk over there.
Maybe it's something that...
It's a temporary patch, but it won't have a lawsuit under it.
Yeah. Or maybe it's something that can be added onto this, you know, to, because you get, I mean, if the contractor's bringing out there, you can fix a couple squares to fix that, maybe get some kids who...
I'll get the addresses.
Yeah.
Anything else, try? That's all. Any questions for the engineer?
Can't mudjack sidewalks. To be what?
Mudjack them, drill holes in them.
To raise them up?
Yeah.
It's not something I typically do, but I believe some public works departments can do that, depending if they're ready for it. It might, in some cases, the cost of the equipment or anything might be easier, you know, just rip out the square and put a new one if you had a project coming.
Yeah.
Anything else? No whole business, move on to new business. Item A, special events and/or amplifier permits. Number one, Lisa...
Free dirt spreaders.
From Fire Pit Bar and Grill, special events and liquor permits. We got three. Lisa, you want to come on up? So, number one is Piattone Car Show, July 29, 2017 downtown, one day liquor license. Do you want to?
Yes. Sorry. You don't know my nads, yes.
Want to just explain what you're...
It's just a car show, and we're going to serve food, like we did at the Summer Fest, and then we wanted to do some slushies with, you know, things, slushies without liquor in it, or ones with like vodka, rum, or whiskey, just the basics, and then just some beer. I have to get the permit from you guys, and my insurance thing, and then I send it to state, and then they okay it.
So this is a one-day liquor license for July 29, 2017, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM for the Piattone Car Show.
Do them individually?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to approve by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Hand.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Item B, tractor pub crawl, August 13, 2017.
Right. The pub crawl, and I should have made out more of these, but if you want to kind of look at this, we might be changing that, it says on there about $10 per person. We might change it where we might just ask for donations, and they can donate what they want for the children's Christmas fund. But the Legion usually does it, and they did do it this year, and I had a lot of people come up to me and said, hey, they're not doing the lawnmower poker run, we can do it. So I was like, okay, I looked into it, and I called Sue, and she says, I don't have time for it. And I says, okay. So, I talked to a couple people, and this is what we came up with, and it's just basically, you got the four, any kind of motorized toy you have, like a four-wheeler, or lawnmower or something, and then you just go to the different pubs in the area. Last year, I think the Legion had like 30, 40 people, if that. It's not a very big thing, but it's something that they enjoy.
And it raises money for the...
And then we're going to take all the donations and give it back to the Legion for their Christmas fund, their children's Christmas fund, so...
This is an event that's gone on for several years, that, as Lisa said, is normally ran by the Legion. I think it's a good thing to keep going, and especially to help the fund for the Christmas fund for the Legion.
And then I, next year, if they want it back, they, I don't want it...
Right.
I'm not trying to take from them, it's just, I've had, I had three or four people come up to me and asked me to do it, so...
Chief's okay with it?
And yeah, we've, like I said, he's been okay with it in the past, and we'll coordinate with Lisa, you know, with the chief to make sure that it's all done within his parameters.
Yeah, it's got to be on this side of 50, I know that much. Or just one side or the other side of 50, but since mine's on this side, then it'll just be on this side of 50. It will end, I guess I had to have an end time. I'm going to have them back at my place by 5 o'clock, but I have jam night there, so they may want to stick around until 8 o'clock, so, which is just like the small bands that come and play music there. I just thought it'd be something to add to it, so if they wanted to do that, too, so...
Make a motion, we pass that, and I will myself donate $100 to him.
Nice.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Jones.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Hand.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Item C, Old Mill Fall Fest, September the 17, 2017, one day liquor license.
Yeah, I got it all done on that one.
Yeah, that's good.
They want me to serve food and liquor at the Old Mill. John Smith came to me at the Summer Fest and asked if I would be interested, because I guess the beer studio used to do it, and he says he doesn't want to do it anymore. So he asked me if I would do it, and I said, yeah, and he says, but you got to have liquor. And I went, okay, it's okay with Piattone, I'll do that. So...
And again, this is something that's part of the Old Mill Historical Society's annual event. Could they have a local business taking part?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee March, to approve the one day liquor license for September the 17, 2017.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Hand.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Now I'll leave you alone.
Number two, Melody Gas Down in the Southland Amplifier Permit. Is anybody here for that? Got an amplifier permit application down in the Southland, Seventh Annual Walk at the Piattone Park District, September the 17, from 10 to 3. This again is just for an amplifier permit. Discussion?
Is this a repeat, or is this a new thing?
They have done it, it's a repeat. They've done it before, yes.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Jones to approve the amplifier permit for Down in the Southland.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Number three, Knights of Columbus fundraiser at various locations, September the 17, 2017. This is the annual Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll fundraiser. They're at various locations throughout the village, taking donations for Tootsie Rolls. Again, longstanding tradition. Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hand, seconded by trustee Hupkey to approve the special event for the Knights of Columbus.
Mr. Hand.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yep.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Item B, business registration, CVS Pharmacy, number 10737222. All of them have, we have the completed business application. CVS has taken over Dax Drugs, they've taken over all of the different Dax. They're currently doing business in the same building, no longer Dax Drugs, but now operating as CVS Pharmacy, and this is their application for business registration.
Do they currently have a liquor license?
No.
So they're asking for it, right?
No.
Not yet, they won't?
Not yet.
They won't, okay.
As of now, this is just strictly the business registration. Motion. Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Bowden to approve the business registration for CVS funds.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Hand.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yep.
Item C, Vicki Moore, DD, and TS Incorporated, Game on Bar and Grill. We have three items on the agenda. Number one, Class O and Class M, loan licenses for Game on Bar and Grill. Last meeting, we had a discussion by the board in regards to this. You guys want to go ahead and just kind of talk on it for a second, and then we'll...
Well, music and outdoor license for, for closing the beer garden in the back, we already submitted those, and it got approved for the stuff in the front, as you guys know, and it's just outdoor seating. I think we hashed everything out last time, if anybody's got any questions.
Question is, how are you going to keep the liquor alcohol from leaving your premises?
We will have video cameras on the beer garden that we will be monitoring. Bartenders will be able to monitor that, and they'll have a screen right up by where the register is, of ourselves, and bartenders will periodically make sure that they don't go anywhere, there will be signs up to state that the beer is only, the liquor is only allowed inside the fenced in area, not outside by any means.
Has this been discussed with... It's been discussed with chief, we've had numerous, chief and I have sat down with these guys on a couple different occasions, and had some long discussions, and chief is...
Don't get me wrong, I think this is a great idea.
By all means, if there's a question, better if I can...
And trustee Hupkey wasn't here at the last meeting for the discussion, so...
Yeah, no problem.
And I, and I just think this is a great idea, so...
Yeah, we'll have a monitor right above the register, so the bartender and staff will always be able to see what's going on outside, as well as, you know, we'll be...
Sometimes it's too, sometimes it's too busy to monitor.
Oh, absolutely, I agree.
So, I mean, I still motion that we...
Well, I mean, the pretty, it's, right now the smokers go outside, and they cannot take their drinks outside. So, alls we have to do is start, you know, policing it and say, hey, if you want to take your drink outside, you got to stay in the beer garden, and if you don't, you will be ticketed. And if they get ticketed, it's on them, you know, like, it's their responsibility. I mean, it's ours, but, you know, they will be told.
Right, yeah. Any other questions, discussion?
I think it's very neighborly to do, considering, you know, the situation of being out front, so...
And I also, I agree with trustee Hand, so I make a motion that we...
Approve the Class O and Class L license application.
I'll second it.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Hand.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Hand.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
And they have fantastic food.
Thank you.
They do. Item two, ordinance for a sign variance, 115 North Second Street, Game on Bar and Grill, variance for a three-by-five sign protruding five foot from the building. Again, this is something we talked about, had a discussion at the last meeting. We have a little bit of a drawing there in front of you.
Should be one page in the picture, and the other page should be the box on the sign area.
There we go.
If anybody doesn't have one, we have extra.
The attorney, the attorney has generated an ordinance, as we discussed at the last meeting. Jim, you want to talk on that?
Sure. The ordinance allows the protruding sign, the three-by-five-foot sign, it has the following conditions, the lowest portion of the sign not less than nine feet from the sidewalk, the uppermost portion of the sign not less than one foot below the second floor windows, the sign shall not protrude more than five feet, six inches from the building wall. I put the six inches in there because as I was drafting it, I wasn't sure, I didn't see how it was going to be attached, and if there was a bracket or something, it, you know, might just push it out, but...
Appreciate it.
That's why that's there. The sign shall be securely fashioned and constructed so that there'll be no danger of the sign being dislodged by ordinary winds or falling from any other clause, which is typical in our sign ordinance, too, but, put it in here. And then the last condition is, the sign is to be removed upon the discontinuance of the current use of the premises the sign identifies. We had talked about that before. That was one I added based on your conversation of the other sign and the fact that if the, no longer there, you got to take the sign.
Move, or like, go out of business, or anything of that nature, the sign comes down, so it's not...
Don't worry about it, you guys can stop with us.
Are you guys worried about the nine feet?
Nine feet's not an issue, we can get nine feet without a problem.
Does anybody, I meant damaging it. It seems low, that's...
The signs above Suzie's and the old Second Street are right in the same ballpark, and then even further north down the street where Compass is, it's same, almost exact same size sign, sitting out at the same elevation.
Okay.
So, and again, we can double check that, and make sure if I need to go a little higher, I can, because the one foot down from the windows will not be an issue either. My two have room for playing. But I personally never seen somebody jumping up at the signs. Don't get me wrong, it's a valid question without a doubt, but I don't remember ever seeing that being an issue in the past too many years.
I move the past ordinance with sign variance. My comment on that before we pass it, passing this, is that, you know, too many years have passed, and too many boards have not even considered this until this present board, so I commend this board for even considering this. I think it's a great idea, it's, it's very, to put something out there, I mean, it's not like it's way out of the ordinary. I just think this, this is going to attract other businesses to do this, and for Game On, seeing that it's such a reputable business, such a, I don't know what else to say.
You made your point.
Yes. And I, I think it's, it's a, it's a great idea. So, other, you know, with trustee March's...
So, we have a motion to approve by trustee March, approve ordinance number 17-09, an ordinance granting a sign variance for certain property located at 115 North Second Street, Game on Bar and Grill. That motion was by trustee March, seconded by trustee Hupkey.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Guys, you can hear it, I mean...
I'll plus.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Hand.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Item three is permission for the 35-by-35-foot beer garden in the Rio game on Bar and Grill. Fence has already been applied and approved back there, licenses have been approved, and I guess this is just a formal, a formal cleanup as giving permission for the beer garden to operate. Motion.
Can I, can I just ask one question?
Yes.
If the business should change hands, what happens to that beer garden?
If the, if the business changed hands, the O and the N go away.
Okay.
So, it's all, yeah, exactly.
Ground, down.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So we have a motion by trustee Hupkey.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Hand to approve the 35-by-35-foot beer garden. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Hand.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yeah.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Item D, fence variances. Number one, G Anderson, 916 Bonnie Lane, request variance for a six-foot vinyl privacy fence.
Initially, they had applied for the fence, but initially they had applied for the variance because they wanted five feet between their neighbor's fence and their fence. I explained that that was not likely going to happen because of the issues they come up with, property maintenance and things like that, so they graciously looked at a couple other options. One of them was tying in their neighbor's fence existing, or taking the neighbor's fence down or replacing it. They decided to go with the tie-in with the neighbor's fence existing, and so that left only thing that they needed to come here for was the fact that it doesn't have the eighth inch slats in it, so this is complete privacy vinyl fence. So that's what the variance is about.
And this is replacing an existing chain link fence?
Yes.
And the property does butt up to Piattone Wilmington Road, and the request is for privacy and noise reduction. Motion. Look, we're going to have some discussion, we need to have discussion first, trustee Hupkey. Is there any questions from the trustees for the applicants?
So the west side, it says there's a five-foot easement, is that what we were talking about?
That's gone away now.
That's gone now, or, is that right?
That's what we...
It's gone.
But it will go away when we butt up to our neighbors, the west fence.
That was the original request. The neighbor's fence is a privacy?
Yes, a wood privacy fence.
A wood privacy?
Yeah.
Okay. So who, so that 10-foot easement on Wilmington Road there back then, then, did you get around there and mow that, or who mows that back there?
I don't know. It's not right behind the fence anymore. I don't mow in the ditches to the road.
Right.
Still staying as motion, right, well, still continue the discussion here.
And the reason we originally started and asked for it to leave the five-foot easement is, when we put that fence up, what was it, 20?
24 years ago.
24 years ago, we were told, that's as far as we go, we had to leave the five-foot easement. So to, I mean, Greg, I'd like to thank you for all your help, and I'd like other board members to know that he was indispensable, and very patient with me, very patient with me.
You were fine.
But that is why the chain link fence left the five-foot easement to our neighbor's property.
Right.
Under normal circumstances, I would have had the chain link fence, and according to the rules, she couldn't, just a question, what happens if I would have, if we'd been able to cover the five-foot easement with the chain link fence, what would have happened when she put up her wood fence, when she had left the chain link up there?
Yeah.
She would have. Okay.
All right, so what's the five-foot easement for?
It's just, he wants some separation. There's a drainage easement in there, it's part of the drainage thing, so, the concern was, and rightfully so on their part, that if there's flooding or anything, they may, they may lose a portion of the fence because we'd have to go in and fix some of it.
Right.
But, I mean, unfortunately, when you have properties that are situated that way, and the way our fence ordinance reads, that's kind of what you run into sometimes, so...
But there's no gas line, or water line underneath there, or anything?
Any other discussion or questions?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So we have a motion by trustee Hupkey, and a seconded by trustee March to approve the request for fence variance application for 916 Bonnie Lane, Gary and Laurie Anderson.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Hand.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Thank you, folks. Thank you. And number two, William Benner, 213 West Sumner Street, request variance for six-foot vinyl privacy fence.
I wasn't available for most of this one, but it was, it's simply the same thing, replacing a cedar privacy fence with a vinyl fence easier. You can answer your question.
Yes, and I was very upset, not, not some answer permit, I can understand that, but I think you need to look at an ordinance, when a person is replacing post by post, the same fence, and to call the wooden privacy fence, I mean, I can't even see a car going down the alley that's that much of a privacy fence, even though it's cedar, because those things are not equally spaced, and some of them are maybe sixteenth of an inch. And I was replacing the same fence with another fence, the only difference is that it's vinyl instead of cedar, and I think you need to look at the ordinance so that it's a little more friendly on replacement. When you're replacing a fence with another fence, one privacy fence with another privacy fence, I think to go through, and I jumped through the hoops for the variance, although it really bothered me because I jumped through the hoops for the variance before, now I'm repeating that.
You're good at jumping.
And I think that, not anymore.
No. I see, and I, I take your point, and that's, it's something actually, the building committee is going to, you know, look at the fence ordinance and have a discussion as we move forward, as well as the sign ordinance.
I think we should, because at times I don't, I'd like to see an ordinance that I think we should, because at times I don't, I'd like to see an ordinance that is a little more friendly and causing less aggravation for a simple replacement. I mean, we have, if you look at Wilson Street, it looks like a war zone, it's been there like a war zone for years. Would be nice if we spent our time and energy on something like that or my kids, or my grandkids who are no longer grand, very small, but they couldn't go from Sumner Street to the Catholic Church without being on the road. There are no sidewalks.
And we've been working on sidewalks for years. We spend, we spend $50,000 a year, you know, on sidewalks.
I'm one of your trustees. I would be glad the, I would be glad if we all were assessed 25, 50 bucks so that we had sidewalks in this entire town, at least on one side of the street, so people wouldn't have to walk on the roads in order to get from one place to the other.
And again, this board agrees with you totally that, you know, that's one of the visions that we're looking at and we're definitely looking at ways to, to make Peatown an easier place to walk. You know, street's always an issue, you know, streets cost a lot of money to redo a street.
Street, sure is.
Oh, absolutely. So, I mean, that's, it's an ongoing issue and, but your point, you know, on this is taken and right now we want to address this variance as it sits.
Yeah.
And are there any questions from any of the trustees regarding this?
Yes.
What is your question?
Well, it's not actually a question, I'm sorry, it's actually a statement. As far as your concerns, myself, my trustee Hupkey, trustee Ham, and trustee Bowden will address this issue and have something to present by the end of August and it will be more resident-friendly.
And that's what committees are for, that's what committees are for, is to look at things and bring it back to the board and let the board look at it as a whole, so...
As Village President Cross has said, so we're all on the same page here.
Okay.
So, we're going to address this to make it more, more friendly.
Well, I, I want it to be safe, I mean, but, but when you replace an identical fence in the identical spot that we had to go through and get the variance the last time, to go through and get another variance, just because you're putting up a more attractive fence with steel posts that won't rot out and lean over, I have full props now.
Well, well, again, sir, just so that you understand, this is a different board, this is a different administration with different ideas and different, you know, everything is different, so we, hopefully we will be able to come to some type of a agreement so that we'll make it pretty happy.
But it seems like I recognize the same old people.
Oh, pardon.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee, second. Motion by trustee Ham, seconded by trustee March to approve the fence variance request for 208 East Main Street.
208 East Main.
208.
213 West Summer.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the word there. 213. Not the village wrong. 213. I, I got so... 213 West Summer. William Benner.
Mr. Ham.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
And Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Questions of the press? Correspondence, communications, and petitions.
On the night, huh?
Motion to adjourn?
No. I have a question.
Okay.
Is there anything we can do for the residents from Division to Ratski at Oak with the flooding? Again, that...
Trustee Hupkey, that is something that has been an ongoing problem.
I understand.
Last year, last year we spent, we spent considerable amount of time, energy, and I think Troy, you can maybe speak on this a little bit, you know, with the drainage coming out of, especially that Division Street Park where it goes towards Peatown Wilmington Road.
I mean, where's this water coming from?
Five inches of rain in a very short period of time.
But it's coming from north of us. Isn't there something, is there something we could do to attach some type of a fee or, I mean, the poor residents from Division, from Will to Division, I mean, they're flooded. We, is there anything we could do?
I'm not aware of this area flooding. I thought you were talking about the Oak Street.
Well, Oak Street, but over by the Division Street Park, I think is where trustee Hupkey's speaking of also, that always holds water. When we get, when we get a very heavy rain.
Like we did last year.
Like we did last year. It does hold water.
Is there anything we, we could do to look at that? I mean, and if you come off of, is it 52?
Surely, I wrote.
Yeah, yes.
On the curve?
Yes. And you come down, you could see how the road goes down and then comes up. Is there anything we could do? I mean, just...
When that field floods, the water...
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I've seen it, 1972, all the way to the top, right? This last week it was halfway.
True.
Joe McRoe, it's a little out of town, as you're heading west, it makes a, it's almost a banked thing.
I mean, trust me, Jones knows...
From the field, halfway.
Yes.
I mean, it's, village had some barricades out there, but if you hit that in a car or motorcycle, you'd be dead.
There's no way, you know, I mean, I'm, I live on Oak Street myself, but from, from Division to Ratski, it's not that, it's not really that bad, but from Division East to Mill, it's, it's horrible. It's horrible.
I think a lot of it has to do, we've done, there's been studies done in the past about the culvert under Ratski Road, how too much water comes from the north. It's that, that tributary to the creek that backs up, so...
And seeing that we now have agreed to Aqua and have that amount of monetary consideration, is there anything that we can do?
Well, it's something we'll have to continue to look at. I know that culvert, we're talking about that culvert at Ratski Road.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully next year that Ratski Road project will be re, Ratski will be reconstructed with brand-new, larger culverts, which should get the water faster out of town.
And if you look at that, I mean, it's, it's, it's almost, you know, if they can, it looks bad. I mean, it's, it's where they can dredge that or, you know, clear that out. It's just so much overgrowth and the last board that was here had said that it's up to the individual property owners to take care of that.
Well, there's, there's a drainage district.
Yes.
There's a Rock Creek, Rock Creek Drainage District.
Yes.
But they take Rock, take care of Rock Creek. The small area there is privately owned, which we've spoken to the owner of that last year and I'll, I'll follow up with him because he was talking about having that area cleaned out and the village did agree last year, we had budgeted, I believe it was $5,000 to contribute to that, to help move, you know, that water, but until he pulls the trigger and has that done, you know, that's the person that has to have that cleaned.
I thank you for that, so...
Well, we put the Ratski Road culvert in there, the new and everything, is that, on the west side of that, will that be capable of handling the volume?
To the west of, west Ratski Road.
And we're going to have it nice and even flow, but when it hits that, is it making that volume better?
Yeah, it should be fine. The only thing that it could make the water, the velocity go through there faster, so, it, that all depends if, once again, if the Rock Creek backs up, there's nothing you could do, it's, so all we're trying to do is make it better. It's not going to be, you know, a solution, but we're just trying to make it better.
Well, if we make it better to Ratski, I mean, it doesn't matter from Ratski on, if they don't...
But I, I know that the, I've had conversations with people from the Drainage District, I know they do a lot of work, you know, through that Rock Creek to keep that clean and keep water flowing. And again, that's small, that small creek, you know, feeding that area right there, that's, that's an area that does need to be cleaned out and I'll fix it, I'll follow up with the owner of that again and see what his plan is on that.
Thank you.
And speaking of the park, you know, that used to drain a lot faster and I don't know...
I think part of that, part of that has something to do with, wasn't there an area last year we worked on?
Yeah.
At Peatown Wilmington Road.
Okay. By Route 50?
No.
Sorry, I missed where you're talking about.
It's Ratski, Ratski Road and Peatown Wilmington.
Okay. So, you know, in the park, there's the detention ponds, there's two ponds kind of that go underneath the Division or on Breaker Lane there.
But the park district?
Yes. And so that, when we get like private train, that floods the park there. And I'm just saying, 20 years ago when that happened, it would go down within a day, but now it takes a week for that to go down. So, I'm thinking either somebody dug up a tile somewhere or something's blocked up there. Yeah, so I don't know if, if we know where that goes to, that we could check.
Yeah, I think, we'll talk to Jim about that, but I, I know last year, I know last year that there was an issue and they worked on it and got it repaired.
I don't think I heard about it.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I think it was last year, it may have been the year before.
Because I'm not near it.
It could have been the year before, so, but we'll follow up with him.
Okay, I can look at it if you need to.
Okay.
That would flow.
Anything else from the board? That motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee March.
No.
Mr. Hupkey.
I'm sorry, trustee Jones. I missed her.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Ham.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.
She's writing the clock for that, she waits so long.
Here and then I don't know where she is.
And, uh...
But I thought it was like...
That's like...